Five or something. Um, right in the council meeting will be at six o'clock. The mayor and the council members may be attending this meeting via Microsoft Teams. The public may also attend via Teams and may submit any comments in writing prior to noon on the day of the meeting by emailing djohns@cityofneedles.com. Call to order, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell. Here Evans.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
Public comment pertaining to executive session, a three limit, time limit per person has been established. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Recession to executive session, Dale.
A conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five for nine, five, six point nine, D two and or three. B conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation regarding significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five for nine, five, six point nine, D two and or three. One potential case related to claim received August twenty-two, twenty twenty-two from attorney for John James Presnahan Zionetti related to alleged April twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two dog bite incident. C. Conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five for nine, five, six point eight property. San Bernardino Meridian, San Bernardino County, California, T nine, N R twenty-three, E section twenty-nine lots five, six and seven. One hundred Marina Drive. Negotiating parties, City of Needles as lessor and Needles Marina leasehold interest from Ramirez Zinagar Family LLC to Castle Park acquisitions, one LLC as less C. Under negotiation price and terms of payment. D conference with real property negotiator pursuant to California Government Code section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. Negotiating parties, City Manager Rick Daniels, the City Representative and Butler America Telecom, a representative of Vertical Bridge on behalf of T Mobile. Subject property is a portion of APN zero, one, eighty-five dash zero, fifty-six dash zero, one dash zero, 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 zero. Located at the city well yard at Bush and in North L Street under discussion lease price and terms. E conference with real property negotiators pursuant to California Government Code section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. Agency negotiator, City Manager Rick Daniels, or his designee. Negotiating parties are the City Needles as a potential seller and Majid Nairi, can't pronounce the last name, Nairi as the potential buyer of a three point one eight acre vacant parcel generally located on the southeast corner of East South Lake Drive and South Riverfront Parkway, Mojave Valley, Arizona. APN two sixteen dash fourteen dash zero, zero, seven. Under negotiations of the price and terms.
On order, executive session report by city attorney.
Yes, the council met an executive session. Item A was conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D two and or three. There was no discussion on that item. We did not cover that item in closed session. Item B conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation regarding significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point nine, D two and or three. One potential case related to a claim received August twenty-second from attorney for John James Presnahan Zionetti related to alleged April twenty-ninth dog bite incident. There was no, no reportable action taken on that item. Item C conference with real property negotiator pursuant to California Government Code section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. The property, San Bernardino Meridian, San Bernardino County, California, T nine, N R twenty-three, E section twenty-nine lots five, six, seven, one hundred Marina Drive. Negotiating parties, City of Needles as lessor and Needles Marina leasehold interest from Ramirez Ziniga Family LLC to Castle Park Acquisitions, one LLC as less C under negotiation with price and terms. There was no reportable action taken on that item. Item D conference with real property negotiator pursuant to California Government Code section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. Negotiating parties, the City Manager Rick Daniels as City Representative and Butler America Telecom as representative of Vertical Bridge on behalf of T Mobile. And the subject property was a portion of APN zero, one, eighty-five, oh, five, six, oh, one, zero, 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 zero. Located at the city well yard at Bush and North L Street. Under discussion were lease price and terms. And there was no reportable action taken on that item. And then item E conference with real property negotiators pursuant to California Government Code section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. The agency negotiator, the City Manager Rick Daniels. Negotiating parties, the City of Needles as potential seller and Majid Nairi as potential buyer of a three point one eight acre parcel vacant parcel generally located on the southeast corner of East South Lake Drive and South Riverfront Parkway, Mojave Valley, Arizona, APN two, one, six, fourteen, oh, was oh, oh, seven. Under negotiation where price and terms, there was no reportable action on that item either. And that concludes a report out from closed session.
Thank you. Call to order, roll call.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Pageant.
Here.
Belt.
Here.
Longacre.
Here.
Thank you.
Please join me standing and all give the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Wade Evans. Our Father in Heaven. Bless his town and its citizens. Guard our council and city staff and their judgments and deliberations. And bless those who travel these desert highway. In this crown jewel of the desert. Amen.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we need a motion for, oh, I'm getting a lot of feedback here. Uh, we need a motion. Need a motion for an excused absence.
I will move to.
And Mayor Williams.
I will move to excuse Councilmember Merritt and Mayor Williams.
I'll second.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
As a courtesy of those in attendance, we'd ask that cell phones be turned off or set in their silent mode. Thank you. Public appearance persons wishing to address the NPUA slash City Council on subjects other than those scheduled or request to do so at this time. When called by the Vice Mayor, please announce your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely minute meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by Municipal Code Section two dash eighteen. Amendments to the California Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, zero. Prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item until it appears on the agenda. Public appearance. Uh, just a moment, I skipped a little ahead of ourselves here. I want to go ahead, motion for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to remove item twelve, seven and eight from the council agenda tonight. We'll bring those back at your next meeting.
We have to vote on twelve out of consent calendar?
Yeah, item twelve off consent and then item seven and eight.
We have to have a vote.
You should put the agenda as modified.
Approve, approve.
The agenda as modified.
I will vote, I will move to approve the agenda as modified.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Belt.
Yes.
Longacre.
Yes.
Thank you.
Conflict of interest, do we have any conflict of interest to report?
You will, you will have one item, item number eleven. Councilmember Merritt has declared a conflict. I understand she's not going to be here this evening, but we do for the record need to state that she has a conflict on that item because it involves a property that's within five hundred feet. This is my understanding of her, of property she owns.
Correspondence, do we have any correspondence? Introductions, did you have a couple of introductions?
There's two people that are new or city staff that I'd like to introduce to the public. First is Kathy Rush. Uh, Kathy comes to us after fifteen years in Habasu as project manager. And then she followed that up with fifteen years of project manager, capital projects manager in City of Fontana. Uh, I don't know what the number is, but my guess is she's done hundreds of millions of capital projects. Uh, we're undertaking thirty million dollars of water sewer, street, park. There's dozens of other projects and um, we're very proud that we were able to attract someone of her caliber. Uh, and it's a shorter commute to here than habits. So I'd ask you to join me in welcoming Kathy.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And then the second I'd like to introduce is Richard Kimball. Uh, Richard comes to us uh, as building official. Um, Richard is uh, was the second command and bullhead in their building department. Again, we're very fortunate to have attracted someone of his caliber. He has all of the inspection and building official certifications. Uh, he's already had a significant impact on expediting projects in the development process. Uh, but one of the questions I ask him is uh, to let him know that we like development. We think creating jobs and, and improving the prosperity of our residents is a good thing. And then he just took off from there and explained how he had done a number of projects in the most expeditions manner possible. He's not afraid to use the section of the building code which talks about uh, comparable um, meeting the code that if it says two before or it says a two by six, the three two by fours will meet the same. Then he's, he understands what that means and, and uh, he is a, a pro-growth, pro-development individual. We're happy to have you.
Welcome.
Welcome, welcome, welcome everybody.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now we'll get, go ahead, Judy.
Judy Thornton, one eight three five South Drive, Mojave Valley. I just want to remind and invite everybody to the candidates forum on September twenty-second at six o'clock here in the council chambers. Uh, all six of the candidates, three mayoral candidates and three counselor candidates have RSVP'd and consented to be here. Owen Long will be the moderator. If you have questions, they will, they can be written that night before the forum will open the doors at five thirty. They can also be sent to me and they're, or they can be written and taken into the Needles Museum. So we hope to see a lot of people here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rita Penac. I live at one hundred Aaron Drive. I just bought my house in March. I have an issue with my high utility bill. Um, first month was less because I had a credit from my apartment. Second bill was three eighty-three, which was normal. Third bill was two seventy, which I thought was great. My fourth bill was seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. My next bill was just about the same. And I was wondering if I could get an investigation on that because I, my usage hasn't changed at all. Um. I went to the power company and asked them to send another meter reader over and go into my backyard and face my meter this close. He never got out of his truck. My daughter witnessed him standing and sitting in his truck in the front. In front of my house, never got out of his truck, so I had them do it again. Uh, nothing else came of it and I'm forced to, you know, I'll, I'll pay my bill, no problem, because I have to keep my family going. But can I get someone to investigate this? At the electric company doesn't seem to want to do this and it's a very high bill.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh. I'm sorry, repeat your last name.
Penac, P.
Penac, okay.
P E N Y.
Miss Penac. Um, uh, I'm the city manager and the utility manager. Uh, I will have someone at your place tomorrow.
Okay.
To read your bill.
Thank you.
Uh, first, that's problem one.
I take a picture of it every week, so I know what the numbers are.
I, I believe. Uh, second of all, uh, there are programs which we operate that can assist uh, please something fits, but lower.
That's okay, I don't qualify.
Oh, okay.
I have three incomes in my household, my daughter.
Okay.
My husband and myself. And we don't qualify for that.
And there's a, there's a new program the state just came out with to help people uh, on utilities. But I promise you that tomorrow we'll have someone at your property.
I did ask to be back on the budget plan, but they won't let me do that until I live in the house for a year. I.
But here, let me, let me. Yes, I am in this.
I'm sorry, I've never done this before.
That's okay.
Yeah.
That's okay. I will, I will get ahold of you tomorrow. We'll give you a business card right now and ask that you. I can give you two to give, so you can write on the back your phone number and then we keep monitoring and we will talk tomorrow. And I will assure you that you'll somebody read that.
Do you work from six to two?
Okay. I understand, I, I will talk to you. Sure. All right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Cindy Melvin. And I'm just wanting to make everybody aware, we are still having our tournament on October the twenty-second. It's dyslexia awareness tournament. We do have flyers on the table. We are asking um, if anyone would like, if anybody wants to sponsor a hole, there's forms to be sponsored. You can contact myself or my, or Tana, my daughter. Um, this tournament, uh, we've, is, it, the money from this tournament, I just want to let everybody know, is going to stay local. Um, and also if they have any questions, you can feel free. Her number is on the front of the, of the form and also she will be able to uh, get you my number if, if necessary. So I just wanted to make everybody aware and also everybody who's here.
Cindy, are there forms that have um, a place to put in the entrance for the tournament, the form that you had last?
I do have those, yes, I do have those. And they're also, if not at the golf course, they're also at the rec center.
The golf course is closed for overseas seating, so there, we can't get them until October seven.
I will make sure, um, if you come by the rec center, it's open from eight to six.
Right, okay.
I've, I've left some there with Jennifer because people have asked over there.
Yeah.
So I said, I'll leave some here. But yes, to get a team together, we have that also. And she has all our paperwork also, and then on the table is a form also to sponsor a tee. If anybody would like to have a hole sponsor. Okay.
Um, you might know someone at City Hall. Maybe we could get a couple of forms that show on the table.
Yeah, they're always here, do you want me to get you one?
Okay, well, we'll take, we can take it more.
Those aren't the entry form, so those are the.
Those are sponsors and we also, if you don't, if you want to sponsor a hole, if you want to just make a donation, that's fine. If you want to do a gift bag.
That has the date on it, though, right?
Right, everything, it's, it's October the twenty-second. Um, we, like I said, we're just, we also have like, uh, we'll take gift certificates, anything, because we're having raffles throughout this tournament. Um, a fifty fifty, um, a hole in one. You gotta understand, I'm sorry, I don't know much about golf, so I can't, I can't, I know there's a hole in, is it a hole in one? And one of the tees and um.
The hole produced two pros.
I, I told them the worst thing they could do for me is put me in front of a TV with the golf, watching golf. Promoting this, promoting it.
Is a trip to the masters.
Yeah, the hole in one prize, if you win the hole in one, it's a trip to the masters. We've got um.
Which hole is that?
Nine.
Nine.
I don't know. Okay, I'll say, I don't know, don't ask me, but um, just, I mean, we'll, we'll take any kind of sponsorship if anybody would like. Or just, and like I said, the money is going to stay local for a, but uh. I kid, a child with IEP or a five oh four plan. Right. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Have any questions? Phone number's right on here for Tana and then she can direct you to me, because I'm usually here more than she is.
Thank you, Cindy.
My name is Robert Yi, live at two oh two nine Disorder Needles Councilman. The Honored Mayor, City Council, I am here once again to invite you to join us on Monday, October tenth to ten, ten flag raising ceremony here at the City County Complex. This started fifty years ago. My father, Wang Yi, and will be the forty-ninth raising of the flag over the City of Needles. It was agreed upon after nine eleven that we'd skip that year. The National Day of the Republic of China, also referred to as Double Ten, is the Independence Day for the Republic of China. It commemorates, commemorates the start of the Wang Qing uprising of October tenth, nineteen eleven, which led to the end of the Qing Dynasty in China and established the Chinese Republic that was formally established in January first, nineteen twelve. Following the Qinghai Revolution successfully overthrowing Qing Dynasty and ending over two thousand years of imperial rule in China. During the course of the Chinese Civil War, the government of the Republic of China lost control of mainland China and fled to the island of Taiwan in December nineteen forty-nine. The National Day is now mainly celebrated in ROC-controlled Taiwan, but is also celebrated here in Needles. With the City of Needles support and the members of the council and people like Bruce Weekly, Billy Ye, Merle Shaver, Dr. Edward Pageant, Rick Daniels and myself, it has grown from a gathering of a few people to uh, over a hundred people from all over California, Nevada, Arizona, Texas and Taiwan. This year, one of my sons, Robert, and his son Ethan will be flying in to join us from Texas. I would especially like to thank the Republic of China's OSANAS chapter of the Air Force Veterans Association for their work, work and dedication for continued support. They also give an endowment to Needles High School band. I hope to see you, along with as many other people who would like to join us, attend this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And uh, for those of you that haven't had a chance to go to ten, ten, I, I urge you, uh, take the time off that day to go to, it's something to be seen. Okay. Presentations. A ten-minute time limit per person uh, has been established by Municipal Code Section two dash eighteen. Number one proclamation recognizing September as National Hunger Action Month. And uh, Pastor Jones, if you'd come forward, I have a proclamation I'd like to read and present to you. Proclamation. Whereas hunger remains a significant problem in California with significant number of people suffering from food insecurity in our state and whereas Needles is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our city, to provide needed additional resources. And whereas children live in households that have difficulty providing enough food and hardworking families must make difficult choices between necessities such as rent, food, utilities and or medicine. And whereas various nonprofit organizations annually distribute hundreds of pounds of food to the residents in Needles. And whereas National Hunger Action Month is a Feeding America effort to raise awareness about the hunger epidemic in the United States and to encourage individuals to take action in some form against hunger. Now. Mayor Jeffrey Williams of the City of Needles, by the authority vested in him, issues this proclamation to recognize September as National Hunger Action Month. And call upon the citizens of Needles and to pledge, citizens of Needles, to pledge to take action against hunger in our community, whether it be by fund or food donation, volunteering or advocacy. Dated this thirteenth day of September, twenty twenty-two, signed by Mayor Jeff Williams. All that you do.
Got to hold on to this. Got a mug.
Stay in there.
Oh, shoot. Throw handle it.
Item two. Mr. Richie Seavong, California Department of Insurance will be presenting a PowerPoint regarding California low-cost auto insurance.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, enjoying virtually from Fresno. See. I can share the presentation off of my screen, so. So, good evening, uh, my name is Richie Seavong. Again, thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you to the City of Needles for allowing me to present today. I will be presenting the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, also known as CLCA. So a quick program overview, um, the Department of Insurance, I'll give a brief overview about what we do. I'll tell you what also the California laws regarding auto insurance and why you need it. Then I'll introduce the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, what it is, how you qualify and how you can apply for the program. So you're wondering what is the California Department of Insurance? We regulate all lines of insurance, including homeowners, auto, life insurance, health and many more. We also regulate the insurance. We also regulate insurance companies, agents and brokers. And something that's new or something, quick fact about California Department of Insurance. California is the fourth largest market in the world for insurance. And we are the largest in the state collectively. Insurance companies collect three hundred and forty billion dollars in annual premiums, so that's what you and I pay. Our elected insurance commissioner is Ricardo Lara. He ensures that insurers are solvent. And consumer complaints are addressed in a timely manner and insurers and licensees play fairly in the marketplace. Everything we do at CDI is to protect the consumers from fraud and abuse. Here's how you contact us, so what can we do for you? Anytime you have a question about insurance, give us a call. If you are shopping for insurance and want to know more, visit our website. If you are denied a claim or coverage, your agent or your agent or company not returning a call, call us and we can file a formal complaint. On our website, we have educational information about every line of insurance such as uh, life insurance, health insurance. It will help you navigate the whole world and confusing world of insurance. You can even look up if your agent or broker is licensed. And we do have the tools to assist you when shopping for this insurance. We have the premium survey, the complaint study and so much more. Please visit our website at insurance.ca.gov. And next, you're probably wondering, what is the law? Why do you need auto insurance? Why do you need auto insurance? Well, California, you do have to provide evidence of financial responsibility. One way is to buy auto insurance. At minimum, you do have to have liability insurance, and liability insurance just means that if you cause damage to somebody's else, somebody's property, you can cover it. And you have to pay for it, of course. It will not cover the damage to your vehicle that you have caused yourself. And if you get pulled over and you can't prove you have auto insurance, you can be fine, your license could be suspended, your vehicle can be even, even be impounded. All these costs do add up to more than buying insurance through the state-sponsored program. So, what is the CLCA program? Well, it was established in two thousand, it was passed by the legislature in nineteen ninety-nine. And the program is designed to provide income-eligible, good drivers with liability insurance at affordable rates as a way to meet California's mandatory auto insurance law, regardless of immigration status. A CLCA policy does offer the basic minimum liability to drive legally, and it is, it's liability insurance for low to moderate income Californians. It's a state-sponsored program, sponsored by the California Department of Insurance, and since its inception, the program has evolved now to, and it's available to almost all to low moderate income Californians, and as long as you're a good driver, you'll be eligible, and you can pay as little to, as two hundred and forty-four dollars a year. And the goal of this program is to reduce the number of uninsured Californians. And you're wondering, how do you qualify? First, you have to have a valid driver's license, or an AB sixty, or undocumented drivers. Second, the value of the vehicle has to be twenty-five thousand dollars or less, and it cannot be financed or alone. Next, we will check the income level, and it is based on the number of people in your household, including dependents. And you also have to be at least sixteen years old, and that last part right here, you can't have a bad driving record for the past three years. If you have more than one point on your record, or an at-fault accident with bodily injury, you will not qualify. So let's look at the rates a little bit. Needles is in San Bernardino County, so they would fall under the tier two. And for the base price of the annual liability premium, it would be two hundred and sixty-three dollars, and it depends solely based on your income, your driving record, and of course, vehicle value, so. Uh, if you are a good driver, driving for the past three years with no at-fault accidents with bodily injury, injury, you do qualify for this program. And we'll look at the income eligibility chart, if you have a four-person income household, your income level could be sixty-nine thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. This threshold does change each year, and is based on two hundred and fifty percent of the poverty level. And if you currently qualify for any state, federal, sorry, sorry, state, county assistance programs based on income, you do qualify for this program as well. So what do you need to apply? Well, you need to provide your driver's license or AB sixty, valid registration, proof of income, and twenty percent of the annual premium. So just imagine, you don't have to worry by looking over your shoulder after you get, as you pass patrol car, because you're driving with at least liability insurance. And through this program, you can afford that much easier price. So, uh, we'll go into proof of income, so some of the examples that we can provide are, that you can provide are your paycheck stubs, W two, ten ninety-nine, as a size statement. And as I mentioned, if you are currently enrolled in a state or county program such as CalWorks, CalFresh, Medi-Cal, or Medicaid, California Lifeline, you qualify for this program. And how do you apply? Well, you can start by going to mylowcostauto.com, take the eligibility questionnaire, seven questions. The application is a hundred percent online, and once you complete that, an agent will contact you to gather documents and collect the down payment, and that's it. And if you have additional questions or need assistance filling out the application, you can use our chat feature on our website. It's in English and Spanish, or you can call the phone number at eight six 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 zero two eight eight six one. Now you're thinking, this is a great program, and I want to share this with my organization, city, et cetera. Fantastic, here's how you can partner with the California Department of Insurance and the CLCA program. So you can help by disseminating information, uh, our brochures in your community, share the CLCA program information on your website and social media, invite us to attend your outreach events, or you can invite us to your staff training or events, and of course, refer us to any local partners that assist with low to moderate income households. I really hope the City of Needles will include the CLCA program as a resource on your website. So if you are wanting to apply or have more questions about the California Low Cost Auto Insurance Program, visit mylowcostauto.com, or call eight six 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 zero two eight eight six one. And if you happen to have any questions or problem with insurance, give us a call on our consumer hotline, which is eight hundred ninety-seven four three five seven. This concludes my presentation, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Mr. Sullivan?
I need to get that on the website. Good idea to get that on the website, like you said, huh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's proceed, public hearing. I'm, I'm very happy for this first item in public hearing, particularly in talking with Pat Martinez down at the uh, League of Cities meeting this week, and learning about how Needles is stacking up in San Bernardino County on this next item of our housing. There's a public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of the adopting the City of Needles' sixth cycle housing element update, staff report.
Real quick, I don't want to take the thunder of our consultant that worked so diligently with us, but MBI, who's on the phone, uh, helped us get this together, and as you know, we're two of, um, two, two of the four, or we're one of the four that in the county that have adopted it. And so there's twenty-four in the county altogether, the cities, and we, 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 the City of Needles, are on the way to getting it adopted, and so we're really excited about that. Not only that, but we were able to do it entirely through grant funds with the help of S P C T A, and uh, the LEAP funds from HCD, so we're very excited that we were able to do this at no cost to the residents of our community, other than our staff time put into this. So with that, I want to go ahead and let Emily Elliott, who's on the line, um, go through her PowerPoint presentation, and we'll, at the end, we'll be available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much, I just want to confirm who's streaming the, the PowerPoint. Is that me or this, the city?
City's got it.
Okay, great, because I just opened it on my computer, and I wanted to make sure I was working on the right one. All right, well, thank you, and thank you so much for that kind introduction, uh, we can go ahead and advance the slide. All right, so before the city council could adopt the housing element update, it needed to first go before the planning commission, and this almost seems like ancient history now, but the housing element did go to the planning commission back in October of last year, on the fourth. Um, they provided some feedback, uh, to us and to city staff, which has been incorporated into the housing element. And so that um, that, that recommending approval has been granted, so the, the city council can make a, a decision to adopt the housing element this evening without any additional action from the planning commission. So the housing element has a few pretty standard requirements, it's the only element of the general plan that's required to be updated on a regular basis, and it's on an eight-year time cycle. Uh, and the big thing that we really worked on in this cycle was making sure that the housing element was consistent with state law. As we all probably know, there's just been a flurry of new state laws year after year, um, and the housing element helps the city stay abreast of that. The housing element also has to demonstrate that the city has sufficient capacity uh, to meet the number of housing units it's required, um, to provide capacity for. And I'm very careful to use the word capacity, because the city is not required to build any housing units, rather just have a sufficient amount of land that's zoned for residential purposes. Uh, the housing element needs to take meaningful actions to further fair housing, so these are actions and programs that aim to um, reduce segregation within the community, and that could be segregation between high and low incomes, or race and ethnicity, um, and improve housing choice and housing options within the city. And then finally, we're coming down to the wire now, but this element needs to be adopted by October fifteenth. Once this council, uh, adopts the element, it'll be returned to HCD, and they will make sure that um, what was adopted matches what they gave us the green light on, um, and then they'll issue the city a letter of compliance. Next slide, please. So these tiles cover the main uh, contents of the housing element. So the first thing that we do, if we start in the top left, is we evaluate the prior housing element. Uh, so the housing element has goals and policies, and we take a look at how successful the city was in implementing those goals, goals and policies, and if there were any goals that, you know, weren't implemented, or just didn't achieve the dut, so their desired effect. We assess that and determine whether those um, goals and policies should be carried forward, or amended, or dropped altogether. Uh, we also conduct an analysis of existing and projected housing needs. Uh, this is a pretty big chapter in the housing element, it's very demographic and data-dense, but it's really trying to project how many units the city will need over this next eight-year cycle. And then right after that, we assess the inventory of available land for housing. And then we identify any potential constraints, so these could be environmental constraints, say that uh, you know, quite a bit of the city is within a flood zone, or it could be um, non-governmental constraints that um, building materials are just really expensive, and that's going to slow down housing. Now, there's not a lot a city can do on that, but it's good to have an awareness of what those constraints might be. Then finally, we come.
So Emily, we're actually, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna do the, the quick and, the quick and expedited version of this, and so we're gonna just speed through these, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna jump through these, you and your team did a great job, uh, but basically, here's our Rena numbers, we need eighty-seven uh, total units to be able to uh, to identify, and we've done that, and then um, we went through this inventory site Rena, uh, and identified this uh, up on Clary in San Clemente, you can see that there's enough parcels available, so uh, uh, MBI, Emily and her team did a really great job of using data to be able to identify those parcels, uh, the statement, it very difficult. We did do a community outreach, this is important to notice for HCD to understand our community outreach, so we did hold multiple workshops, so we did meet the community outreach criteria. Here's some of the programs, it's in our packet, if you guys want to go through some of them, uh, we can go ahead and uh, identify some of these. Um, there are penalties, uh, basically, if we didn't come into compliance, but we were able to do that, so go, MBI, good job. So uh, Emily, I don't mean to steal your thunder, it's uh, I'm just getting the hook here. So the adoption for uh, to our recommended action is resolution number nine thirteen dash twenty twenty-two, adopting the sixth cycle from twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-nine for the housing element update for this general plan. So she's got it wrong, so Emily had this wrong, so that's fine, so ten, twenty, twenty, uh, twenty twenty-two dash seventy is the resolution that we're gonna have, uh, adopted, uh, and so MBI has ident, uh, identified all these things, it's in your packet. If you have any questions, you know how to get ahold of me, I can get you in touch with Emily, but basically, this is our recommended action, we've worked very hard. Uh, we're gonna be, like I said, uh, one of twenty, one of four of the twenty-four in the county to be adopted, so we're really excited about that, so. We're about to be certified, all with grant money, so good job, folks.
Your honor?
Yes.
I would move to adopt. Oh, it's a public hearing, I'm sorry. I've got a line, thank you, I'll wait.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, do we have any public comments? Discussion by the council. I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Emily, thank you for the hard work.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you so much for all of this information, this is great, we're very excited.
All right, thank you, and sorry, I didn't get the note about the Cliff Notes version, so thanks Patrick for sparing me.
So Mayor, the public hearing's closed now.
Okay, the public hearing is closed, discussion and by the council. I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to adopt.
Second.
Second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by council member Campbell, a second by council member Longacre, call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item four, public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for against approval of a decrease of the prima facie speed limits on East Broadway Street from Sebilla, uh, Sebola Street to I forty overpass, and from West Park Road, on the National Old Highway road to Needles Highway, staff report.
Mr. Mayor, uh, before you do that, we did receive one letter uh, today, I believe, um, comment on this.
From Barbara Beard, and it was in opposition to the proposed school on I forty speed limit reduction.
Right, bring it up, but come. Um, I'll open the matter to public hearing.
Just real quick, uh, Mayor and members of the council, in front of you, we have ordinance six five three dash AC. Every ten years, we're supposed to be going through this drill, and we're right on schedule since uh, the last time we've done it. So basically, this allows our sheriff's department to enforce the speed limits. When somebody gets a ticket, they got to make sure that this speed study is done to ensure that they can enforce it. So what came out of the speed study is that two segments of road are recommended to be decreased from the supposed speed limit from, so East Broadway, from Sebola to I forty, forty-five to forty miles per hour, and then West Park Road, National Old Trails Road, Needles Highway, um, fifty-five to fifty. On the line, we've got Mr. Fred Mindegar, uh, he's, he got twenty-two years of public service. He's also the mayor of Laguna Niguel, and so we're, again, we're able to use grant funds, the COPS grants, we, we appreciate the COPS being able to fund this, but again, we're able to use grants to get these uh, surveys and studies taken care of, so with that, Mr. Mindegar.
Thank you very much, um, good evening. Mr. Mayor, the honorable council members, my name is Fred Mindegar, Principal of Mindegar and Associates, Inc., it's a pleasure for me to be here before you, I just wanted to very briefly talk about how we did this project. Uh, as it was mentioned, every ten years, uh, maximum ten years, every city in the state of California must have an updated engineering and traffic survey that the law enforcement, uh, can, uh, enforce, uh, the speed laws. In early June of this year, we wanted to make sure that before the school closures, we deploy our troops on different streets of the city of Needles, and we collected, uh, not only the average daily traffic for a typical weekday, but also in conjunction with that, at the same time, during the off-peak hours, we collected the radar guns, meaning that we wanted to make sure that we survey one hundred vehicles traversing that specific segment of the roadway in the city of Needles, and based on the speed of eighty-five vehicles, we determined that what new speed limits ought to be implemented and enforced, uh, in the city. Based on the complete and comprehensive survey that we conducted back in June, um, we have our report in front of you dated August tenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, upon your ratification of the speed limits, it becomes, these speed limits become the law of the land, and your law enforcement, um, personnel can enforce it. Basically, as you was mentioned, I'm very pleased, uh, to mention that out of twenty-one street segments that we surveyed along thirteen citywide streets, only two segments were qualified for a decrease in the speed limits, and the two segments are specifically one on East Broadway Street between Sebola Street to I ten overpass from forty-five miles per hour to be reduced to forty miles per hour, and the second street segment is along West Park Road, uh, between National Old Trails Road to Needles Highway. The existing posted speed limit is fifty-five, we are recommending that that speed limit to be reduced to fifty miles per hour. Upon your ratification of, uh, the speed limits tonight, uh, then, uh, the speed limits can be adjusted so that your law enforcement personnel can enforce them. Obviously, there is a, a cooling off period that the public has to be noticed, and that's the purpose of this city council meeting tonight, uh, to present it to the public, and then, uh, the law enforcement and the public works personnel can. And then the law enforcement and the public works personnel can physically change those two posted speed limits at those two specific locations in your city. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, you haven't seen this letter, but it, the letter of opposition is that this is a four-lane highway. It's commercial, not residential. There is a merge lane off of I forty onto Broadway, which isn't quite true. There's a merge, which is a nearly a stop. And three, there's a decrease of speed from forty-five miles an hour on Highway ninety-five South already exists south of the interchange. This is our main street and again, zero residential, all commercial. You have any comments you want to supplement your staff report on? Put that in mind.
Are you talking to?
You're talking to him?
Him?
Yeah. Dr. Miniger, you have any comments on the letter of objection?
I don't have any specific comments, but the traffic survey is based on purely engineering and the data that we have collected from the city of Needles. It's based on the average daily traffic, based on the geometry of the roadway, based on the number of lanes, based on the roadway classifications per federal highway administration. And it's also based on looking at what would be the prevailing speed of eighty-five vehicles out of one hundred vehicles surveyed. So the proposed speed limit decrease is a hundred percent based on data. It's not based on any other factors. Obviously, based on the geometries, you know, traffic factors, based on accident history of that area, as well as, you know, the speed factors that I mentioned earlier. So therefore, there is no emotions. There is no political elements attached to it. It's a hundred percent based on scientific survey of the subject segment. Therefore, I recommend the city council to approve the requested decrease for the posted speed limit for that specific segment that the citizen had requested for readjustment.
Right. Discussion by the council?
Yeah, I have a question. He said multiple times, so law enforcement can enforce the speeds. Law enforcement don't enforce the posted speed limits now? I'm quite curious on that one.
Well, no, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Longacre. State law requires that you do a speed study every ten years.
Okay.
If you don't, then you can't enforce.
Oh.
So all of the speed.
We did the study.
We did study. So if you do the study, then you can enforce speed limit. If you don't do the study, then all of your speed violations.
When's the last time they done a study on the highway? Because I'd like to do like a hundred. Just saying. I'd get there a lot faster.
That because that's just outside my pay grade. We are required to do city streets every ten years. Without it, then we can't enforce.
It just seemed like, the way he said it sounded odd to me. That's why I asked. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Wade?
I got two questions. Think about, think back enough, Zach. We did the study. If it's not changed, they still have to enforce it, correct? Because we didn't study, right?
Yes. Yeah. And, and really, the law prohibits you from adopting a speed limit different than what the traffic engineer recommends.
So we, so we can't leave it the way it is?
Well, no, because I think he's recommending that, that all the two streets stay the way they are.
Next question. I know it's probably not a lot, but who pays for signage changes?
We will be eligible to apply for grants.
Good question.
But lawfully, you cannot, you have to change it?
Yeah, it has to be based on, as he said, they, they look at the physical alignment of the road and the speed curves that are out there. And they assess what the proper speed should be. They also go out and look at traffic volumes. They also go out and look at what people are traveling now. And, and then they put it in the machine and twist the handle and outcomes for recommended speed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Campbell.
I would like to ask John to clarify that. Is that, because we talked about this before. I want, maybe I misunderstood that it is always recommended to adopt the recommendations of our study, that that is recommended, but are we actually required by law to make these changes on those two?
So I, I think Mr. Minigar has been wanting to address that point, and so I'll let him.
Okay. Thank you. You address that, Mr. Minigar.
Please, go ahead, Mr. Minigar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me clarify this. It is the sole discretion of every city council in the state of California to overrule or to object to the staff recommendation, which in this case is my recommendation as a registered engineer in the state of California for changing those subject speed limits. It is, again, the sole discretion of this body to not approve it. What is going to be the potential negative ramification of not approving what has been recommended to you is that basically, the law enforcement wants to issue any citation, to issue any tickets, that individual citizen can go to the court that has jurisdiction over the city of Needles, and the judge is going to throw out the ticket. Because the judge is going to say, it's typical in the state of California. It doesn't matter. We've got four hundred and eighty-four cities in fifty-eight counties. It doesn't matter where you are. The judge in that court can refer to this report, which is a technical slash legal report. If in my report for that specific segment, I'm recommending a reduction or even an increase in the posted speed limit, the judge is going to look at that speed limit number. If the number is not the same as is posted, therefore, that citizen cannot receive a ticket. So that's the potential negative ramification of that. However, it's a hundred percent your discretion and in any way, I'll be supporting your decision. But that's the negative ramification.
Thank you.
Your honor, one more quick question.
All right.
That forty-five zone right there, hasn't that been changed in the last ten years? It hasn't been forty-five for the last ten years. There's no way it has.
Well, one of the things, Mr. Mayor, if I might, one of the things that, that Mr. Miniger found was that the speed study that was done, the signs weren't changed. So it might have been forty-five in the past.
It was twenty-five.
And what, what he found is that
I don't know what it was.
And so he's recommending that we change the sign that's out there today, which should have been changed ten years ago, to forty.
Mr. Mayor, may I elaborate on that?
Forty-five right now.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Yes, please.
Thank you. Well, this is one of the first things that we discovered. Once we deployed our troops there to take new measurements based on radar gun surveys, the report that we received back from them was indicating that the city ten years ago, back in twenty twelve, did not, for some reasons, did not change the speed limits for that specific segment. So we wanted to eliminate any potential ambiguity. We wanted to eliminate any potential discrepancy. Therefore, we used the latest survey, which was conducted back in June of this year. And based on our survey, the eighty-fifth percentile was forty-four miles per hour. Legally speaking, we have to reduce that forty-four to the nearest, you know, five or ten miles. Therefore, we are recommending that that speed limit to be changed from forty-four, which is the eighty-fifth percentile, and the posted happened to be forty-five to forty miles per hour. That's the technical response to that question.
Creating a speed trap. I think.
I want to know if there's been a study done on accidents in those sections. Is this speed? Is this speed that we have posted that's not, not in compliance with our ten years ago? I can tell you, I've been here thirty-eight years, and that street has been, was twenty-five miles an hour.
Five years ago.
Forever. It was a joke. I tell my friends in the city that I live in a town that has no stoplights, and we are twenty-five miles an hour. And it's really damn hard to drive twenty-five miles an hour. And then we get it up to the speed limit where we're in the twenty-first century. And now I don't want to see us becoming searchlight. I want officers to cite people who are speeding. That's just fine. You're speeding, you're speeding. That's the posted sign. You do not deviate from the posted sign, regardless of what our speed study said ten years or twenty years ago. If it says forty-five miles an hour, forty-six miles an hour is speeding. In a courtroom, in the judge, you just admitted you sped. You're guilty. And then you don't even, forty-five and a half, you're guilty. You never say you had my speed limit set to forty-six. Because you're guilty now. You got a ticket. So it's, I am really concerned about speed traps. With the way this traffic comes in from, off of, from Blythe coming into the city, we already have a decreasing speed limit. We have it coming down, coming down, coming down, coming down. And there is a, when you come in from Havasu, that lane merges down onto Broadway. It isn't yield. It's, I mean, when you merge, you have to yield. But, and I hope that most people yield. I haven't heard about too many accidents. But my question is, is in the speed study, thank you, this is a very elaborate speed study. A lot of work was put into it. I appreciate that. I want safe street. I have a lot of children and grandchildren. I want safe streets. But, I mean, do we have any kind of a problem with that speed limit, that there's accidents, or it's caused a dangerous situation for us?
Well, as, as the, the traffic engineer said, the, the eighty-fifth percentile of the speed is forty-four.
We can be forty-four?
No.
No.
Just kidding.
So no one's speeding through that area on average, but we're still gonna knock it down five miles per hour.
Fifty-five up that road.
There. And if this passes, we're gonna take staff time, go replace signs. Yeah, because ten years ago, they didn't, they passed it. And then we've had an unenforceable. So anybody who ever got a ticket out there could have challenged it and on Victor Bill. And
And just paid to take it.
It was unenforceable. So that's the downside, is if you don't follow the recommendations, which you have the right to do. But we need to be aware that it's then unenforceable.
Okay, I have one last question and I'll shut up.
So you're telling me
I can drive.
That the, at the, the speed limit is recommended to be forty.
Yes.
But we have forty-five.
Yes.
So if you're going forty-nine and get a ticket, it can't be enforced? That's what you just said. No, that's what you just said.
It is. It is.
Can I go a hundred down there right now?
I think the issue is, if you have the data and you have a study that's been done by an engineer setting the speed limit, and you have something different than that, then you've got a rule that's posted on your sign that is arbitrary and capricious and therefore unenforceable. It needs to match up.
Okay. Well, that's our answer. Why do, yeah, we, this is, well. Because you have to.
I just think this gentleman has, is an engineer designed to, this is what he does.
Right.
I mean, I didn't, that's not what I do. So I'm gonna definitely take his recommendations for the betterment of our city. I mean.
I disagree with that.
No, no.
Staff time, money.
We just need to ask all the questions, though. But if we can get grant money, right, and because we're following.
Right, I'd like to accept a public appearance.
All right. Thank you so much for answering our questions. Well, you have my memo, okay? Barbara Beard, two thirteen Safari. This is the road I travel every day, sometimes fifteen times a day. And everybody in Gate subdivision that's on the road going to the post office or anyplace else, or getting on the freeway, is gonna travel part of this road, if not the entire stretch that you want to change. I just followed a sheriff's deputy's car down from, I picked him up waiting to get onto the highway behind a semi parked at the corner, which is an ongoing problem we've had that isn't enforced by the sheriff's department like it should be, as far as I'm concerned. So I'm sitting, I took pictures and sent them to the city manager. The sheriff's deputy car was the last car in line with all the traffic as I was sitting there trying to be able to see between the, the semi truck and the oncoming up here right now, where the speed limit's already forty-five. Doesn't matter if you can't see, and the sheriff's department isn't even bothering to enforce that law, okay? Deputy drove right by. He looked at me parked on Safari, waiting forever to get onto the ninety-five, and did absolutely nothing. Saw the truck, saw me, and kept going. I followed him into town. I was going to the post office or someplace, and he went above the speed limit. And, of course, I'd like to do ninety through there, but that probably wouldn't be safe, okay? I traveled the roads and the highways of LA for thirty years. It's been forty years since I've had a ticket, and most of that time, a good chunk of that time, I spent in LA and on the freeways. I lived in Huntington Beach, which is near Laguna, where our gentleman is from, Laguna Niguel area, which I was through there many, many times. And there is kind of, there used to be back, back in the day, kind of a speed trap going along the beach area in Laguna. I don't want to see that. I'm concerned, although the city manager wasn't apparently concerned about it. I drive it every day and I see it happen. If I have to go to Rite Aid and I turn in that little turn right past Autozone, there is traffic coming off that freeway not yet slowed down from whatever speed they were going. Whether they are at fault or not, they do not slow down to merge onto ninety-five. I'd say half the time they do. I hit the brakes for one of them because I knew they were, they did not realize that, that they were coming into a city. If you slow that speed limit down even further, I think you're gonna almost create panic for people that are trying to merge there. I don't even know if the speed limit's posted out there right now, for getting off the ninety, I mean, off the I forty onto the ninety-five. I go the other way when I get off that direction. Anyway. So I can handle a reduction in the speed. I think about people coming into our city looking at exactly a speed trap, searchlight, okay? And the first thing they do when they're coming from the east, which a lot of tourists do, first time they've turned off there, "Welcome to the city, and here's your ticket." His deputy sits right by Harris Motors. Permission to continue? I'll wrap it up. Thank you. I would like to ask if, now, I don't know, you said that this study was based on data. So are we talking about the data with people sitting out there and looking at vehicles that travel, that are in vehicles, like cars, as opposed to semi trucks? Okay, which are just coming out of the Rite Aid area, that are just coming out of repairs, that are just getting ready to merge back onto the freeway? If the semi trucks that haven't even gotten up to speed yet are part of that survey, the survey data is tilted. I would like to know if the proposed change on the speed limit applies both ways. We have two different speed limits right now that are also posted for that area. One different one coming up the hill and another one going down the hill. The one coming up the hill, it changes at thirty to thirty-five at a certain point, while the speed limit on the other side is still forty-five. So are you going to change this? Are you proposing to change the speed limit going both ways? And does that have to? He's nodding yes, and you just said yes. Okay. So we're actually raising the speed limit, going out of town, coming up the hill. And we usually no, it's posted at thirty-five, okay? Up towards Harris Motors, okay? It's thirty-five. It's forty-five on the other side of the road. So are we going to raise the speed limit going up the hill and lower the speed limit going down the hill? Yeah, right. Okay. I have nothing other than what's in, I think we have a dangerous condition already with the slow speed limit when you get off the freeway and the other issues I mentioned in my memo. Thank you for your time.
Yes, Mr. Joe.
Good evening, mayor.
I'd like to ask the attorney, if this is not adopted by this council. Would a potential accident that happens in the future, if it's not adopted, would that become a liability for the city of Needles?
Well, if we. If we didn't follow the the speed study, then we would be setting a speed limit that's arbitrary and capricious. And so we would have liability exposure if we just set, for example, let's say the city council decided to put 85 miles per hour on a street. When the recommendation of the engineer was 45, just an extreme hypothetical. And somebody were injured in that accident, then the city wouldn't have the protection of being able to say that it followed the recommendation. A licensed traffic engineer. So there it would, it would expose the city to potential liability.
Thank you, and I appreciate your very liberal three minute policy. Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I I kind of had a little bit trouble hearing you back there, but the gentleman that did the study, he was talking about the the 85% with the. Oh, I'm sorry, he didn't. So I'm Joanne Pogue. Do I have to give my address and everything? 2004 Cortez Street Needles. So he was talking about 85% of the speeds is 44, and then he talked about, obviously, we can't have a 44 mile an hour speed limit. So it's rounded. Did you say it's supposed to be rounded to the nearest?
Yeah.
44 is closer to 45 than it is to 40.
It is the discretion of the engineer to to lower the proposed posted speed limit. To 40 because of other elements that we have for that specific street segment. Every segment of the survey does have all the data that is a part of the city council presentation tonight. All other factors, including accident history, traffic factors. Such as the average daily traffic, lane configuration, what type of traffic control we have in the vicinity. Having crosswalks, having presence of pedestrian and bicyclists, truck traffic. And all other factors will take into account. That's why from 44, which was the speed of 85 vehicles surveyed out of 100. Between 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on a typical off-peak hours of traffic congestion. We surveyed all vehicles inclusive of trucks. And based on that, we are making the recommendation that that 44 should be reduced to 40.
Okay, so 44 was just like a little part of it and you're not recommending 44, but you can't round it. You can't have a 44 mile an hour.
Exactly. Nowhere in America we can use that kind of speed limit, 44, 42, 43. It has to be the 40 or 45 or 50 and on and on and on.
And I thought the issue was the rounding that would be rounded to the nearest as opposed to rounding down. So I kind of, yeah, just.
Mr. Mayor.
Other public opinion? Or public, like, anyone else from like to speak? John does.
I I just wanted to, you know, the the comment about speed traps came up tonight. We hear that comment sometimes, and as I understand it, maybe Mr. Minigar can agree or disagree or elaborate. But as I understand, the concept of speed trap, which is illegal, speed traps are illegal. Is where you have a study like this and then you set the speed limit below the prevailing speed in order to generate revenue. And that's what a speed trap is, and that's banned in California.
Thank you.
Should be in Nevada.
Especially in searchlight.
Right, I'm going to end the public appearances and bring it back to the council for deliberation and action.
Your honor, I would, I think that we have done our duty as city council to examine this. And look at the clouds from all sides now, along with Joni Mitchell. And we have examined this. We've addressed the concerns as best we could. But taking with the study that we have been given, the fact that our attorney has advised us that to go against the study. It's not something we can do. That it's the advisement that we change it and that we do have a street coming up and one going down. So there's no ambiguous speed limit for people to go and I don't, and it isn't searchlight, but that's what we do fear. I'm going to move that we adopt the change.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I don't like the lowering of the speed limit, but we got to do what we got to do. So I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Longacre. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans? Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5, public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony. Or against approval of amending Chapter 15A. Excuse me. Recreation area use renaming First and Second Beach. Bob Belt Beach Park Staff Report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you recall. There was a, you earlier, I think it was last month, adopted a policy on naming. Places and things in the city. And then you instructed us to come back after you adopted that about addressing. First and Second Beach and the new park is going to be built there that's funded 100% by the state. We're recommending that First and Second Beach be signed and recognized as Bob Belt Beach Park. Now, it will, that will be the beaches at the, what is it, Up River Side. Manny Morris Park will remain the same. It's just the new area.
With some new additions, actually.
Yes, so we will have, we'll have essentially two city parks. In the next door to each other. And they will each have the. QR code and the flagstone sign identifying each. So our recommendation is to approve that name change.
All right. Counsel questions of the staff? I'll open the matter to public hearing. Anyone want to speak on this matter? Any no public comment? I'll close the public hearing. Counsel discussion deliberation.
Your honor, I move to approve.
A second.
Motion by Councilmember Campbell. A second by Councilmember Longacre. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Assess city council meeting and convene a joint council NPUA meeting called order. Roll call has previously been taken. Public comments pertaining to the NPUA slash council items. A three minute time limit per person has been established. Are there any public comments? Item 6, NPUA council, approve and authorize the city manager to execute the Western Area Power Administration WAPA. Agreement 87-BCA-10098 Exhibit A1 Revision Number 10. Relating to the Parker Davis Project Allocation Rate of Delivery. C R O D.
I'll make a motion to approve item 6.
I will second it.
Here we have a motion by Councilmember Evans, a second by Councilmember Campbell. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Agnes?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 7, NPUA slash council approve as 5%. Oh, I'm sorry, that has been taken off the agenda. Item, adjourn the joint NPUA council meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items 9 through 15 on the consent counter by affirmative roll call vote.
People of 12.
12 has been removed.
Your honor, I'll move to approve pulling 12.
A second.
Prove what?
Move to approve the calendar without number 12.
The 9 through 15?
I'm sorry, 9.
That's a motion by Councilmember Campbell, a second by Councilmember Longacre. Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Belt?
Yes.
Longacre?
Yes.
Thank you.
End of consent item, regular items. City attorney's report.
I reported the last meeting and I'll give a report. I do it once a month, so I'll give it at the next meeting as well.
Thank you. Councilman, I'm sorry, city managers' report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I've distributed my list. The Highway Safety Improvement Plan application was submitted today. For $448,000 of safety improvements that were recommended in the. Recently adopted local roadway safety plan. Caltrans allows for 90% funding. We applied for 100% funding because we're a disadvantaged community, meet that definition. We'll see what the. What the funding amount comes out. We were approached today about the women's club of Needles. Had. Air conditioning problem. We're looking at qualifying them for our utility assistance program. There could very well be a railroad strike beginning on Friday. We are prepared for it in terms of, we've advised the union about what's allowed and. The manner in which to picket or demonstrate. I was informed today that Amtrak is terminating the passenger service. It would think that if 108 freight cars or freight trains were off the tracks, it'd make it easier to run Amtrak.
Not if they're stopped in the middle of the tracks.
Yeah, I know they belong to the same unit.
There you go.
Well, anyway, the point being, the railroads already began to shut down hazardous waste materials. This is just with the transport of them because they want them all in safe harbor. So is, in the event that happens, we're prepared. Go ahead.
Amtrak shut down just for this?
Yes.
It's three ways to be around.
It's part of the strike. Okay. I thought you meant they weren't coming through town.
No, no, they're, they're, they shut down three, including the Southwest.
They have talked about shutting down.
But there's 750 to 800 boardings a month at that train station. So it is an inconvenience and will harm the economy. You will see either on your next agenda or the following one, a food truck ordinance that's ready to go. Patrick will be taking that from the planning commission. County Supervisor Dawn Rao is organizing a resource fair. For people that need assistance of various types. Whether it's help in paying their utility bills, whether it is food assistance, whether it is rental assistance or housing assistance. She wants to hold that in the. Of ours in October, November. Which will be her first visit to the community. We had a loose boat. Someone driving down. Noise ordinance? Oh, I'm. Sorry. We have. We've received some complaints about. Construction work starting too early. Okay. So we're looking at going to the planning commission with a. From 6:10 PM.
Palm Springs has one, I understand.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Anyway, loose boat. So someone's flying down the freeway. And boat comes off the trailer, jumps the bridge and lands on J Street.
I saw the picture. I thought that, I thought that was a sign that tourist season is over.
And that, because you know what? That's why they have tie downs. Keep your boat on the trailer. Well, anyway, we had one that I'm sure he's filing a claim now with his. Oh, it destroyed the boat, but it didn't hit the light pole. How?
Thank God. Thank God.
Last weekend, St. Vincent's had a fundraising dinner. It was max attendance, very good turnout. We have begun this week on the neighborhood renewal plan, which is the $20,000 of assistance to lower income. Homeowners to help them with roof and painting and the light. That program is now in motion. Also in motion is the paving that you all authorized a couple of weeks ago on the streets down. We are underway with engineering for the next phase. We expect to be able to do another two and a half May and come the spring. And then on the outage, I had an embarrassing trip back from Georgia. Where Oregon played horribly, but as I caved south of searchlight. I was advised not to take the Laughlin Cut Off. Go up around the Parkway to come home because the roadway was closed between the Laughlin Cut Off and. And Interstate 40. I got on the Parkway, falls down. They directed us, so I drove the entire length of Bullhead. And it was freaky. Dark black. From Mojave High School South. Except for the AV. Except for the casino and except for their gas, the tribal gas station. But for the shining city on the hill. Of Needles, which was fully lit. And I just want to express my pride and admiration for the people on our liquor crew. That kept the lights. And we were different. And and the utility board were making investments in power pole replacements. About 800,000 a year for the last three years. Because.
Local communities are going to take note of that.
That's right. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Be glad to answer.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you. Okay, the, I have a list. The first thing on my list was to acknowledge and thank the, all of the people who work for our utility. Section of our city because they go above and beyond and in storms and lightning and rain, whatever happens when holes go down. These men have to go out there, go up in buckets, risk their lives and do all kinds of things to keep our power on. As well as go to the community rescue or whatever they can for the other side when something happens. So the the communities here pulled together for the power outage to, they came looking to everywhere for getting supplies and help. And everyone did what they could. And that's, you know, the beauty of living where we live is we do what we do for each other. I I'm really grateful that the the facelift program was on my list too, and they have started and the people whose homes are being started are so excited. I want to remind everyone to please be mindful of the horrific water shortage that we are in the middle of. You know, you shouldn't be taking 35 minute showers. I know they feel good. But you know, there's just, we have a program. I, we have, there are ways you can take your. Yard and remove some of your turf in exchange for a monetary exchange. So you want to look into that, you can come down to the city and talk to Rick, talk to the utility company. If you will agree to remove X amount of feet of turf and replace it with desert landscaping, there's a monetary value for you. And the city will monitor your water bill to see what the benefit is so that we can look forward in the future to what kind of. Programs we can do to help people to make these transitions. I mean, we all like the, to pretend we live in. You know, in green hills and trees, but I like the desert. I want to also remind everyone that our peak hours are from 4 to 9. Every single day, so you might think about doing your laundry and you're running your dishwasher during other hours. That will save you on your utility bill. I would like to see our city put together some kind of a list of all the ways that you can. You'd be amazed at how, I'm not going to sit here and hold you captive. You'd be amazed at how many ways you can save on your electric bill by changing certain things in your home. And maybe we could put together some kind of a list that will. And maybe we could put together some kind of a list that will educate the community and help them with their bill, uh, with bringing them down and, uh, ways to do things. Um, and then I also, uh, I don't know what the rules are about fireworks in our town, but there's someone over in my neighborhood blowing up fireworks that look like they're at the AV. I mean, like, I mean, we're not allowed to have fireworks, are we?
No. Uh, the rules on fireworks are they're prohibited? And, um.
These aren't little.
Encourage them to call.
Okay.
Nine one one.
If it shoots over ten feet in the air, it's illegal.
No, no, it's like lit up my whole neighborhood. They were doing it at nine o'clock at night, three nights in a row.
Yeah.
So I I'm going to find the, I'm going to, I'm going to sit outside and find them. I'm going to find, I won't touch them, I promise. And I do, uh, without going to any detail, I do want to thank the Sheriff's Department for everything that they, for everything that they do and, um, uh, and for getting to my house in seconds today, in seconds. They were there like that. And I I do want to thank you and tell you how much I appreciate what you did for me. Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Evans?
Just going to touch on the, uh, food truck ordinance during Labor Day weekend. There was a taco stand in the parking lot of, uh, THC, is that what it is, right?
Right.
Yeah, and I was just wondering about the legalities of that.
Um, they've been, uh, they were informed and then they, we've begun to cite them.
Okay, because they're there all three days. I know, I know Councilmember Belt has been pushing for this food truck ordinance and I don't. Yeah, yeah, that that's what I mean, like, if they, if there was a permit or something, but.
They would need a permit, which is administrative, but it's also, they need a business license and they need a seller's permit from the state franchise tax board.
Wow.
Someone to.
About two hundred.
Food handler.
In a food desert, we we have how many restaurants in this town?
I was thinking, I was thinking that it's taken away from other restaurants. They're coming right over the river. You can see a taco stand. I was going to Munchies, but, you know.
Also, um, what if they're catered events? What if they're hiring these guys as as a catered event, not as just a food truck in their parking lot?
That's okay.
So it's a catered event is okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
As long as they have their food handlers permit.
Do they have to have food handlers permit from San Bernardino County?
Yes.
What else?
Yeah.
Sellers permit?
Uh, they need a business license to operate inside the city business.
Yeah, I I just see dragging on this situation is is not good considering we don't have a lot of options to eat in this town. So the quicker this moves, the better off we are.
We'll have it.
Thank you.
I will, your Honor, I ate there. They were across the street. Killer food, it's really good. I gave them my business card from the city as a city councilperson and I directed them to City Hall to speak to Rick, to get a business license, to, um, to get their food handlers and do this completely legal because we needed it. And he might even consider getting a truck that's mobile because we want one and we permitted one. So that's the conversation I had with him when my boys and I ate their killer tacos. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, back to, uh, Councilmember Evans' comment, and that is that one of the issues, the planning command, I'll go to the planning commission first, is do we allow them on the street or do we require them to be on private property with the permission of property? Now, some cities have prohibited them with prohibited food trucks within two hundred feet of a restaurant because the last thing you want if you've invested in a bricks and mortar restaurant is having someone set up a taco stand.
That's another question I was going to ask was with cannabis. I know we have a lot of ordinances with cannabis. Um, I know one of them is you can't post flags on the property, correct?
Yeah.
Right, I don't know. I I don't know if they're breaking the ordinance or, or, you know, I don't know.
We're on that one, too.
We can discuss all that next week.
All right.
Whistle will come up next week.
You're done. Thank you very much.
Half of my list right here.
Councilmember Belt?
Uh, yes. That's, I mean, my goal is just to have more options for people to have food in our town. That's not to overregulate anybody. My goal is not to overregulate, but the fact that we to offer people more ways to provide food for our town, that's, that's what I want. Second thing, a couple of things, um, our online payment, I still want to push for us to be able to pay everything for this rec center online. I am a huge advocate for collecting money and it's so much easier when I'm allowed to pay online for, speaking of which, the tea party that is this Saturday at the rec center, these events that we said want our kids to go to, all of our events for our families, locals, sports, everything, but if we can pay online so that I don't miss out on paying because I forget to bring a check because I don't carry checks. So online payments, I I'm pushing for that for this, everything. Second thing, um, I I've caught, my daughter was asking how old she had to be to join council. And I was like, oh, well, you know, I think eighteen. So then, uh, we were talking about this with others and we thought, well, how come we don't have a student representative for maybe like the Parks and Rec? I don't know if there's a spot, how we can open up and say, can't we open it up to have somebody come and run for a year and be able to, through the school, the high school, whoever, to, um, you know, invite them into our, to our life so they can understand and learn about youth and government? I mean, the younger, I know some time we talked about this in the past before, Rick, to get some, a leadership where they can come, follow you around, Dale around, all these jobs that people do to see some government, local government and how they can become an actual part of our, um, government. So something we can do to open up a spot, I mean, even on our Parks and Recs for them so they can, we can get the input of actual kids in our community and what their needs are and what they might actually want. Um, and it is, I'm going to bring up again, the tea party is this Saturday, the seventeenth. It will be at the Women's Center, which I'm hoping they'll have air conditioning because we'll all be there. Um, and so if you are, ha- have a child between, like, I don't, something up to twelve, you can, um, get them, bring them over to get them registered for the tea party this Saturday. And, uh, last is the golf tournament is October twenty-second. Um, please sign, bring a team, sign up, have a great weekend, enjoy learning a little bit about dyslexia or specific learning disabilities, and I'll be happy to talk to anybody else about that if they have any questions. That's it.
Your Honor, I got a couple of things. Um, first, food trucks was definitely on my list. Um, any way we can move that along as quickly as possible, um, for sure. Um, also, uh, I I'd like us to review our sign code entirely. This needs to be a discussion. Signs are crazy all over town. I know there's signs up that are violating rules that we just wrote into law less than a year ago, so let's talk about that again. Um, and I don't know what we can do about this one, but, uh, went to Dollar General the other day and there was a bunch of little old ladies standing in line with their groceries in their hand. I said, what's the problem? She said, we've been issued twenty-five shopping carts. My, this is the only store in our whole town that has shopping carts. They've been issued twenty-five, they have three. There's one in your alley. I'll go get it. I will go get it, take it back.
So I'm going to put that one in my truck and bring it to them.
Like, like, like I said, I, I just find it twenty-five and they have three in this small old town. If we see somebody push them in a park, i- it's like, it's a misdemeanor under state law, business, BMP, you, you can't take it and not return it. You you can take it, you can leave the store, leave the parking lot, leave the property with it, walk it all your groceries all the way to your house under state law, but you have to bring it back. And and like I said, I don't think there's much we can do about this, but I I said I'd bring it up because I I watched three little old ladies trying to juggle groceries in this line and it was ridiculous.
Because those things are fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars a piece.
Uh, I saw a red one from Target on the gauge the other day. It was on the gauge the other day and I'm just like, wow.
There are, there are some cities that I've worked in that they have electronic sensors around the front of the property where the wheels lock.
They just put a pole on them like Ross does. You can't walk them out the door, have a nice day.
Yeah.
Um, um, last but not least, I I definitely want to say thank you to our utility team, um, and also to staff for for doing this poll project for the last three years because to be honest, three years ago, I thought that was a waste of money. But, uh, after this last week of watching people sweat to the oldies across the river, that is totally not the way I look at it now. Uh, infrastructure is a must and it's something that we haven't been able to do for twenty years and in the last five years, we've been banging it out. So we, when we say we spend eight hundred thousand dollars on polls, that's a good thing. And, uh, our lights on and our air conditioning on all week long while everyone else's wasn't is a big deal. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Put a shout out to military moms. Thank you, we, you know, for acknowledging our children, you know, out there, the signs going up for our Needles children that are serving in our military. And we're starting to get the banners and the flags up there and it was really exciting to watch them go up and to see them up there. So I just wanted to give that little shout out. I'm sorry, I forgot that. Thank you.
That's okay. And I, uh, I want to report, uh, traveled last week down to San Bernardino for the SBCTA meeting on Tuesday and then, uh, across, uh, over to Long Beach for the California League of Cities with Patrick Martinez and Councilmember Ellen Campbell. Uh, we, uh, and also, uh, got back in time in order to watch our Needles Mustangs win their game last week up at the Anderson Fieldhouse and want you all to know that Needles Mustangs are playing against Laughlin in our stadium here Friday night.
Your Honor.
Hope you can come to the game.
Your Honor, how how'd that air condition feel, Phil?
Great.
I bet.